We do have a legal meeting after our regular meeting this evening, and so we need to bear that in mind. Before we get to the adoption of the agenda, just want to make mention of the added items, added point, two point oh seven, which is an acknowledgement of donations. Florida Learns Foundation Incorporated donated one thousand dollars to the Taylor County School District for Hurricane Relief. That's PACE, I believe. Was it PACE that was part of that? Okay. Also added four point oh one purchase order. Emergency Roofing Services Weather Shield for seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and two dollars and fifty cent to repair slash replace the TPO on roofs from Hurricane Adelia and Hurricane Helena. Added also eight point oh one, number four, approval of agreement slash contracts work order form pursuit to an agreement dated December the eighteenth of twenty twenty-three between the Taylor County School Board, District, and the Synergy Disaster Relief LLC. Those were have been added to the original agenda. So we're at the time for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Dunell seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, and then, of course, the approval of our minutes, September the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, of the regular school board meeting, a public hearing, and executive session.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton and Ms. Dunell, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. And now we have a presentation by our superintendent.
Ms. Ronnie, we're going to table that for a future meeting.
I'm sorry?
We're going to table that for a future meeting.
Okay, so we're.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. Ms. Carlton makes the motion that we table. Ms. Dunell seconds that. Okay, there again, we have acknowledged the donation of a thousand dollars for Taylor County School District Hurricane Relief. All of our consent items were approved by the adoption of our agenda. And brings us down to the items of interest or concern by the public. Do we have anyone who'd like to address the board this evening? If not, we move forward to our action items. Twelve point thirteen would be the very first action item this evening. Ms. Tillman of the Director of BBTC is requesting the reestablishment of a Secretary Three position at BBTC. The position was moved to the high school when a previous employee was transferred. The position will be eight-hour, twelve-month position for the remaining of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Can we just motion for discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Superintendent Bishers, can you give us any information on this, and like the funding for?
Yes, ma'am, it's added, it was already in there. We had an employee that's retiring, and she wasn't, her job wasn't classified as a Secretary Three, although she, I believe that's, those were the duties that she was doing, but she's retiring. So basically, that was already part of the budget.
Okay.
It's replacing the person that's retiring.
Okay.
And they're just reclassifying their job.
Okay.
I change.
My question is, it moved to the high school, now it's going to be moved back to Big Bend Technical? No?
The Secretary Three.
So one of our employees retired that was at BBTC that was basically was Jody Secretary, although she had a different title that served, you know, and she's.
Okay.
We've already heard her retirement. But the, but there was, in addition to that person that's retiring, they're also used to, previously, there was also a Secretary Three position out there. But years ago, when the ACE program was closed at, when it wasn't BBTC, but then it was.
It was VOTI.
Yeah, TTI. Whenever the ACE program was closed, that position, that Secretary Three position was moved there to help with that influx of students and, you know, and so forth, that went back to the high school. That person has also retired, so that that position number was still floating around, if that makes sense.
I remember that now.
So you're not, you're really getting a person for a person. There was already a person at BBTC. She's retiring. This position is simply, we're just saying, we don't need a lab manager, whatever she was classified as, we need it to be, to be called that Secretary Three.
So if we.
I remember when that happened.
Yeah, but if we establish this Secretary Three, the position, you will delete the other one or.
Is it closed or is it deleted? Like, what's going to happen with that position?
Nope.
No, because they don't have that going on out there anymore.
No.
The position the person is retiring from is lab. That's what.
She was called lab manager, I think.
Well, somebody's going to still do that job.
They, she's restructured, they.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am, so because that person used to be over like the.
Pair of pros.
Yes, ma'am, the testing, yes, ma'am, like the pair of protests and all those things. Now that she has kind of shifted some things around, the person that she needs, she doesn't need them to oversee those things. She's, so she has other staff members that are now overseeing that computer lab. That's why she didn't want it to stay a lab manager. That's why she.
So in essence, we're not adding anything.
You're not adding anything.
So could we, could we delete that position, the lab, after, you know, you do this? I mean, that, not necessarily not, but couldn't we delete that one?
Yeah, I guess my concern is, I know anytime there's change, there's a lot of reconfiguration, there's a lot of, you know, stuff, there's a lot of change in how we do stuff. But it seems like as Brenda is expressing, positions move or they go inactive, but then we look up and then there's a, there's a re-need for them. So I'm not sure if this is something that's a site level or is this is something that will fall on the HR. But I think it would be a good idea right now. It is time, especially we know the critical position we is financially, for us to kind of really get a good idea of what positions out there, where they at. I know we're not feeling anything right now because of what you told us the last time, Superintendent, but I think it would be a good idea for us as the board to know, because again, we're told this stuff is not there or it's not needed, but then we look up and it resurfaces. And so it kind of, you know, leaves us unclear.
I think the best thing for us to do is to not just make that, that other position where that employee's retired inactive, we'll delete it.
Right. I don't know, we need to do some type of audit or something in regards to our jobs and the classifications.
Need it in the future, you can recreate.
Bring it back, yeah.
Yeah.
Recreate it, because you're probably going to need to redo it anyway, as far as job descriptions and all that.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent.
So I will change my motion to a action. Pedro.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion second for action. All in favor of those for this, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carry. All right. Item thirteen point oh eight, we have two items here. Item number one was a request to name Dorset Stadium Elmer Coker Field.
Okay, that's, needs to be reworded. It's to be named the field, not Dorset Stadium is not changing. Just the field is being named. Dorset Stadium is staying. This is just the field itself being named Elmer Coker Field, and I make a motion to that.
Well, I actually, I don't mind us making a request for the name, but I was going to ask that we pull this tonight. And my reason was that when the presentate, when it was brought to the board, it was doing public comment. And so it technically was an agenda item. So I wanted to ask tonight that we table this for workshop and really kind of engage the community over this. I feel like this is going to be something very significant, and I do acknowledge, and I really do think this is a good theme for us to, you know, really do and to really, to acknowledge. But I also feel like it has set a precedence, how we take action on this. And so I know I asked before about a policy, if we had a policy, and I understand we do have some language in our policy, but it's very vague. And so I just wanted to see if we could table this tonight, bring it back for workshop, give the individuals the opportunity to not only just present it to us, but present it to the community, and we really kind of involve the community on how we move forward with this.
When you got second involve the community, are you asking that you ask the community to vote or make suggestions?
So I think what you're.
I mean, if discussion comes up at the workshop from the board on that, but my, my real issue is just, we really present this to the community. Because when it came to us, it wasn't an action item, it actually was a public interest. And so since the individual came to us with this, and I, I do think it's a good thing, I think Mr. Coker is, you know, have made significant impact, because we've honored him before and with the induction of the Hall of Fame. He's been inducted into the FACA Hall of Fame, and we did a presentation. But I just think this is going to be something significant, and I just think how we take action on this, it has set a precedent to the community, and I just think we should engage them on it.
I just don't understand how you're going to engage the community.
Well, I think if it's on.
There has to be a process if you're going to go that way.
If it's on our agenda, they would know it was on our agenda.
I think if it's on the agenda, they'll know.
I understand. I think what you're saying is if like we agenda, like it wasn't.
Like do the agenda item, yes.
If we put on the agenda, we're showing the public, it's going to be on the agenda. So if they want to come and see, because I'm sure Mr. Sutherland wouldn't mind.
Right.
It would already be agendated, and so the public would be made aware of it. So if they have any, I think I understand.
Yes, because Mr. Sutherland, when he spoke to me, he told me he really wanted this to be an agenda item. But he said that there was a little confusion in how that process took place. So he came to the board, but he even told me what he presented to the board, there was even more he wanted to present and recognize in regard to some other coaches. And so I'm just saying, I think if we're able to workshop it, that'd give him and actually the whole.
Community.
Booster club the opportunity to present this to us, as well as, like I say, it would give the community the opportunity to be present on it, so.
Point, I'm sorry, you're a point of clarification at a workshop, you don't necessarily.
I know we won't take action.
You don't take, you don't take public comment.
So you might be better served by having a public hearing if that is the intent to have public input.
That's, that's my question. If we're going to involve the community, we've got to have a policy of how we're going to involve them. If it's an agenda item, we're just going to vote on it. It's not going to be anybody in the audience, if it's an item of interest, which I thought that's what Mark brought to us before.
Mm-hmm.
Now it's an agenda item, so I don't understand where.
Well, whether it's a public hearing or whether it's an agenda item, I just think it'd give the community the opportunity to be involved.
Ms. Carlton, what was you saying?
Well, I just wanted to say, I, I'm the one that called and asked that, you know, we talked about it the other night and to put it back on the agenda. I'm, I am in favor of moving forward with it. If we need to do something, we can do something for the next time. I mean, we can go through and figure out what that process is, but I don't have any.
I wasn't able to, at the meeting, I wasn't able to be here. I was on the phone, but I was at the field, and it was kind of hard to hear. I understand, you know, that I wasn't here for the presentation. I did receive the packet, I went through the packet. So again, I, I, I think this is a great opportunity as a community, as a district, for us to honor one of our own. I, I just really think it's something significant, and I feel like we'll set a precedent in how we take action on this. So I just think it's something that should really involve, where the community will have the opportunity to know that this has came before us. I know that it's been covered in the paper, that Mr. Mark came to us, but I, but I just feel like it's just so significant, so we should really involve the community a little more on it.
I, I feel like we should go with.
No, not necessarily feedback, no, no. Yeah, I didn't, I, it's just like I say, I thought we had more of a policy, because like, for instance, I know when we acknowledge people with the Hall of Fame, like, it's a process, like they actually, you know, it's, they do an application, you know, they really go through a process, it has to be voted on and everything. And so I'm just saying, I know we represent the community, but I feel like it's something that should really engage the community and involve them on the process.
Let me ask this question. All the pictures that used to be in the hallway, all the people that are dedicated to the Hall of Fame.
Mm-hmm.
They're voted on or they're recommended or whatever by the.
A committee.
The committee. Fill up, the packages that they're burned in.
Mm-hmm.
The nomination packet, and they give all this information.
But there is a committee, nobody, no, but you can't just turn it, you can't just turn it in and that person get on, get, get on their thing.
Well, and I think we've done the process here. Mark came, he presented, and then it's on the agenda. And I'm with Brenda as far as I think we've done what we need to do. Now, if our policy says something different, and it's got to be done like the Hall of Fame, then.
Yeah, it's.
It's.
Naming something out of the field. This is a. Naming field, I can't say go to.
Dorset Stadium.
They build it, they took its name off. There's no policy on naming something.
There is, yeah.
There's no policy anything like that.
There, there is a policy. There wasn't when you were up here.
We just read every policy.
There's one now. Seventy-two fifty, I provided you all a copy of it.
Yeah.
So there is a, a policy for that. It doesn't outline a specific procedure for presentations, public comment, and that sort of thing. So it's very vague, as pointed out already, but it does give you some insight into what type of individual civic responsibility and, and input and all of that that you should consider. It does indicate also that the naming is permanent, and so when you do take in action, as Ms., I'm having a brain cramp. What's your name again?
Ms. Dunell.
I'm sorry. As Ms. Dunell said, it, it, it is something that will be sort of set in stone, subject to coming back. So, I mean, the board can outline any policy they want or procedure. It is on for an action item tonight. You've all been provided a copy of the policy, so it's the pleasure of the board as to whether you go forward or table it until another, another public hearing and have Mr. Sutherland come back if he's available, make his presentation and so forth.
I mean, I under, I understand what Ms. Dunell is saying. I don't think she's saying.
I'm not saying I'm against it. I don't say I don't support it. I, I just say, I just.
She's just saying like they came and nobody knew they were, like the public didn't know they were coming. I mean, I understand what you're saying, like, it's probably, it's definitely probably going to happen, but I think the point was, it, you know, when they came, the public didn't know that they were coming, and so there wasn't really an opportunity for us to get public feedback, except for the people that were there, because nobody in the community knew that they were coming. Does that make sense? Because it was just your own public comment, am I saying, am I explaining this correctly?
But there's been in the paper, we've announced it.
Was it in the paper?
Announced, agendaed, and then.
About for eight months in the year. We have asked people all over. Anywhere in Army. Have talked to people all over.
I'm not looking for anything negative, Mr. Sutherland. What my concern is, was I, I just feel like when you do something like this, I mean, we've had a lot of significant people that have played a role and impact in this district and community. And so my concern is, this came through public comment, I, I wasn't aware what has took place over eight months. I just know what we was presented, we're at the last board meeting. And so when you presented it, like I say, I wasn't at the meeting, but what, yes, you Well, technically, I, I'm not hoping anybody is against it, and that's not what my concern is. My concern is, I just think it has set a precedent, and so if the next individual come before us and public comment, and they say they want to rename the district, I'm just wondering, not rename the district from Taylor County, but rename this building. I just want to know what action would the board take in regards to that person coming, and how would they give a response to that individual if they came before us and said, we want to rename this district building from Allen Wentworth or whatever it's called? If they say we want to change the name of it, what type of response would the board give to that? And so that's what I'm asking. These buildings, this district belong to the communities. Yeah, we're voted and elected to represent, but I just feel like the significance of the renaming of the building should involve the input of the community. I'm not saying that I want them to be against it. I would hope people would support it, just based on the work you've done and what the individuals have contributed to the community. I just think it's something that involves the public input, that's all I'm saying. I feel like it should be something properly noticed to the public. When they put it in the newspaper, they put it in the newspaper in the coverage of a meeting. They didn't put it in the newspaper as this is something you've been working on for eight months, and that this was, that, that there was interest to do it, so, yes.
Anybody up here?
I don't think that's the point.
It's been in the paper. I think we can fill the room up with public feedback if you want me to.
I'm not asking for us to, I, I think you misunderstanding the concern. I acknowledge tonight what you came to me and what you said. I acknowledge that. What I was asking was to give the community the opportunity to receive the presentation that you brought to the board and be aware that this was the interest in the community as well as the board was showing interest in it. So that's what my concern was.
Ms. Ball, can you tell us what, I'm sorry, Ms. Ball, can you tell us what the best way to do this is so that we, that we do this the correct way?
Well, the, what you're, I think what the concern is, is that the procedure you utilize in this instance is going to be a precedent.
Correct.
For future issues of similar type that come before you. So I understand the concern, I also understand the comments about taking action, so it, it really, you don't have a policy that defines step by step, this is your procedure. So this may be a way to do that, even though you're not doing it in writing, you are setting a precedent by doing it. Mr. Sutherland, is there?
And I'm fine with doing that, I'm fine with that.
Can I ask a question? Is there any, is there some urgency to this, Mr. Sutherland?
It's not our code, Elmer Coker, long-term code here, and it's urgent, second long-term. He dead, Elmer. I don't know how long he's going to last. I mean, he's close, I think. I mean, he's getting around, but he, he gets older, eighty-eight, I think now. I don't want to go.
But if we took action on this, what?
We got one more game.
And that would be November first, so we're not going to do it before November. I mean, if it didn't happen before, if we did it at the November first, which is the homecoming game, right, that would be the plan. We have several board member, board meetings after this one before that. I think that's what they're saying, Mr. Sutherland.
I think.
Well, no, that's not, that's not the, right, that's not, I don't think that's, you know, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Can, can we possibly look at this? I know that because of the vagueness of what we have, and, but there, there again, there was a, a present, you know, a big presentation on this, just the last board meeting, the papers covered it, and we agreed up here to put this on the agenda.
Well, wait a minute, when did we agree? I don't, I don't recall that. I said we needed to look at the policy, but I don't remember that we was putting this on it to go automatically to action.
If I thought for one minute that this would change anything, I would go for postponing, but it's not going to change. So let's just go on with it.
I also don't think that it matters if you postpone it, if it's not going to happen November first, I'm ask, I'm going to ask for an additional meeting, so we're actually not going to have just one. If y'all agree, we're going to have two meetings before November first. But that's up to you as a board, I don't, either way, because, I mean.
Somebody else. Somebody else.
And this is exactly why I'm asking this, Mr. Sutherland. I'm just asking that.
Procedures, I think.
For a procedure, and, and that's what I'm saying, because like you say, if you, okay, and.
Well, because we couldn't vote on it last time, because last time, you know, it was just an, it was just an item, no, no problem, no problem.
I think I really think.
Yes, sir. I think we just want to do it the right way.
And that's what I'm saying, I, I.
But I don't, you know, we've got a, I've got a timeline. I mean, I do, I don't know, he may be here ten more years, but I've got a timeline in my mind on that, and I want him there, and try to do it for the Florida High game. If Florida High gets scheduled for November first, we want to do it then, so we don't interrupt homecoming. That's our goal, but we could, and I have no problem with that. I do have, and I hate to say it, I've got a problem with it now. I mean, you want people in here to say you got to do it? I'm having.
No, I'm not saying I want people here, because we, we know this, no, that's, no, no, that's not exactly what I was saying. I was saying that I would like for it to be an agenda item, so you can get the same presentation that you gave to us, but give the public the opportunity to see that presentation as well, if they, they was willing to come to the meeting. We have meetings all the time. You can't make people come, you can't make them participate. All I was saying that you did give a presentation, and as you mentioned to me, there was something you was looking further to do. So I just felt like if you had the opportunity to not only present that to us, but as well to the community, that it would really rally the community behind this. I wasn't expecting this to come across negative or diminishing of anything you was trying to do. I actually thought it was going to be a good idea.
I didn't bring it up, helps the super things. Pre-urgent, it was going on a while, because Dorset family, and so they don't come back thinking we're trying to take the name off the stadium. That was it. Ten years.
And is that correct me if I'm wrong, but is that because the Dorset, the Dorset family donated the land and all that stuff, right?
But we're not changing Dorset, you're not changing Dorset Stadium. You're just naming a field and a press box.
No, that's what I'm saying, but he's just saying back then, they didn't, the Dorset family didn't want us to do that.
Right. Because it has no name at this point.
Yes, yes.
And we got one more thing that could go the name off, and it's, I mean, it's, he Turner, Coach Turner from.
Jerkins, yeah.
He deserves it too.
Right.
And that's our goal, but, you know.
And see, that's why I was asking for this to go before the public, because when you presented that night, you presented in regards to Mr. Coker and the Burgess, but when you mentioned it to me, you mentioned that there was something more you was interested in doing, so that was another reason why I was asking for this.
I think it's, it's a problem. Well, this will issue not good here, I'm not playing. We need to try that. I mean, it's a simple, simple thing. It's not something that we're going to, primary name. I mean, it's just a simple.
All right, well, here, here we, okay, here's where we're at. We've heard what our attorney said, you know, about the vagueness, but what we might need to consider, we've heard what Ms. Dunell had to say, but this is up for, you know, it's on the agenda for up or down or to table, whatever. Now, Ms. Agnew, you made a motion to approve this. Now, is that what you are?
I will make a motion to go ahead and name the field Elmer Coker Field.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
I will second it, but I do still have something else to say.
That you want?
I'll second it, but I still have something else to say.
Okay.
Okay. Angela, do you remember how we named the, the last thing we named at BBTC? Do you even remember it coming before the board?
I'm not even sure what you're talking about, frankly.
I know what you're talking about.
I know what you're talking about, when we, when they did the, the thing in honor of Mr. Dow.
So, I mean, so, I mean, we, I'm telling.
I have no awareness of that.
So we have.
Did that, did that become before the board? I'm just.
I don't know.
No, it didn't come before the board. It was, it was something we did out there. I don't know if it's when they just did building of the building or something, but they wanted to do.
Wouldn't do it related when it was.
It was a wing that they did in honor of Mr. Dow.
I also, if you want to look at presidents, I was at the high school whenever they named the range at the ROTC Smith, after, it wasn't First Sergeant Smith, I'm sorry, Ms. Sharon's husband, I'm sorry.
Sessions.
Sessions, Mr. Sessions and.
Charles Sessions.
And, and Mr. Ammons. And I'm not sure that ever. And I'm not sure that ever.
And I do recall.
I don't think that came before the board. I mean, we had a little thing, but I don't remember that we got board permission. I'm not sure.
Okay. But, okay, so one other thing. But, but even if we did have a public hearing, you're talking about 21 days. I don't, I don't know how you could do that.
I wasn't asking for a public hearing.
Well, you should take it to the public.
Oh, I was just.
I said putting it on the agenda so it would give the public the opportunity to be aware of it, that it came to us in regards for the interest from the community. That's, that's all.
And maybe that's where we're at. And maybe that's what I'm trying to say is that the presentation's been given. We did ask for it to be back on the agenda for, you know, a vote.
And we mentioned that in the meeting.
Yeah, and, and so forth. So, you know, it's up to the board. But we do have a motion and a second to approve this. And so, I'll just ask for a vote at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. It's not a question of not being, uh, uh, warning it.
It was not a question. It was just stating that we need to set a precedence. Because again, if someone comes before us, is it gonna be easily? And I'm not saying easily, but is it gonna be automatic action if someone came? And I, I do also want to just acknowledge that, you know, I, I did do some research in regards to administration before me, how we've moved on this. And it was brought to my attention that when First Colonel Sergeant Smith passed away, that there was interest in naming something other him in regards to the school. But it was stated that we couldn't do it. So, they just dedicated the office over here. I know in 2020, we did something at the field where we acknowledged LeGarde Blunt on the, on the sign. And the sign got damaged last year. But then when we redid the sign, we didn't put that back up there. And so, I was just saying that just, just make sure we take a precedence on this. Because moving forward, if someone else came, how we was gonna respond to them? That's all I was asking.
From, from this, we maybe need to go back and look at our policy and make it what, what we feel like it needs to be.
Okay.
Item number two on this, naming these facilities is request to name the press box at Dorset. Okay. Request to name the press box at Dorset Stadium, the CT Burgess Press Box. Wants to carry the board.
Motion.
Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so Carrie.
Just so you know, now, and I'll get whoever I need to get early enough that it can be hold to those things.
Do we have a name on the, what they call the halftime room or the building? Just a thought.
Okay. Thank you.
You look like you've been working hard, Mark.
Okay, this brings us down to items of interest by the superintendent and board. And just remind everybody that we have a, a legal meeting coming up and very shortly. So, Ms. Beshear's.
Um, just. It's, it's been a rough few weeks. It's been a rough 13 months. Glad to see the teachers come through the line today. The teachers that were in town were provided a hot lunch by a wonderful woman out of, I believe she was out of Waukulla County, Becca Brantley in Cornerstone Church helped to organize that. And I thought that was fantastic. I think that really helped our teachers today. You know, they have their own families and their own things to worry about. And so, I was, I was very happy and impressed upon seeing them and asking them how they were doing. And I mean, all the responses were the same. Even somebody who I knows home got really damaged. She was here today working and I said, you know, like, how are you doing? Oh, I mean, we're gonna be okay. You know, I mean, we got some damage, but we're, we're good, we're good. And you know, th- those are just things. And so, that's, you know, that's just the essence, I think, of our community, period.
Any idea on the impact to our teachers? And I'm talking about that lost their homes and students.
I do. I think we have about, I think we have, I have a list in my office. It's either eight or nine. I think it's nine teachers who are either, they're not all complete losses, but I'll give you an example. Like, you've got, let's, let's say we got three teachers at, at Dark, I mean, at DeKalb. Two of them have rubble. There's no home left. One of them, actually four, two of them have rubble. They're just literally rubble. And then the other two houses are standing, but they're not inhabitable, of course, because there's no sanitation there and they don't have, like, one of them didn't even have stairs to get to her house. So, even if she could get up there, there's no sanitation, no power. So, you know, so they're, so in essence, the houses are still standing and they're actually in good shape, the other two. But they can't live in them. So, so anyway, I think like nine, nine people are displaced for sure. Either absolutely have no home or not one they can go to right now. We are working on some things to try, try to help them any way we can. So, it's hard. I mean, it's hard. You got, you, you saw all the pictures of, of the beaches area and, and Hennstein Hatchie. And you know, I've rode down there and I've, I've tried to talk to a lot of our residents and, I don't know, we're just a strong community. When we say Taylor County's strong, it's more than just some kind of silly little saying. It's, it, it means something. But anyway, our kids are coming back tomorrow. And if, if parents choose to send them, we're gonna provide. And I've said this multiple times to people. We will provide a cold, cold spot, hot meal, and we'll take care of your kids. I think that some people who were, let's just say, I received some less than positive feedback from some community members, not, not very many, but just a few about reopening so soon, especially in Hennstein Hatchie. And for every one that I received that was negative, I probably received two more that were positive because they said, thank you so much. I don't know if y'all saw some of the people that did some social media posts, but they said, thank you so much for opening the school down there. My five-year-old or whatever is, you know, like, I've got to go clean up this mess. And I, I'm glad that I have somewhere for my kid to go because first of all, those kids don't need to be in this, like, grown-up mess. Like, this is, this looks like a, like a war zone. I, I don't know how else to explain it. And, and so, to be able to get those few hours of, of respite for their children, you know what I mean? So, they can go and do grown people things. You know, some of them have to still go to work. Some of them don't necessarily work in Taylor County. They may have to go to Dixie County or Gainesville, wherever they work or into town. And so, they're very thankful. And again, my message has been the same as it was in Adalia. We are not here to be a burden. We're not telling you have to get up and bring your kid. Like, if you can't do it, take care of yourself, take care of your family. That, that's what you need to do. Your mental health matters to us. Like, where you're at in your life matters to us. But if you need us, we're here. And we don't care if anybody's learning about the quadratic formula or, you know, how to diagram sentences. I don't know if they even still do that. But anyway, we don't care about that. We just want your kids to be safe and we wanna help you. And so, so that's where we're at. It's gonna be a long road. We're gonna have a lot of expenses that aren't covered. Because they fall under deductible. So, I'm very concerned about our financial status after this. But, but we're gonna get through it because we always do. I think, I think, was there anything else, Kiki, you can think? I don't.
How did our, I'm just gonna ask a question. How did our exchange teachers handle it?
They all left town. And one, one was taking care of five charts that she'd been going through. Rose went to Orlando and one went to Jack.
But they're back now?
Yep.
Alicia, I know you had sent out an email to the districts. And as Bunny said, it was, you know, very, you know, suitable and appropriate email. But I also know, I got a call today from one of my daughter's teachers. So, I do know that calls was being put out, you know, by employees, so to our families. So, can you kind of give us, you know, any feedback on, you know, how that went with, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Administrators and teachers been able to reach out to our families?
Yes, ma'am. I, so we met yesterday as an administrative team in here and we talked about, and I said, I, I need y'all to do one thing. One thing with your teachers tomorrow, please. Talk to all your teachers and I want these three questions asked. Are, are you okay? Is your child okay? Number two, what resources can we provide or find for you to help you? And number three, is your child gonna be able to come back to school Wednesday? You know, those were the three things that I asked. And so, I know that teachers were busy calling, calling home. I saw some kudos, I saw some kudos on, on social media about, they just felt like that teacher reaching out like that and saying, how are you doing? That meant a lot, you know, have a real person saying.
Right.
How are you?
Not only that, it is on the security that they know that somebody's gonna be sitting there waiting on their child to receive their child that that child's familiar with.
And listen, the kids are, like, parents, not parents, but some of these, some people who were not perhaps thrilled to come back, who don't work in the school system and they think that these kids aren't gonna be ready to come back. Like, y'all, that's not what we found last time. The kids were so happy to be back. They would rather be with their friends and their peers than having to look at what's going on around them. I did have reports of some, some, some parents did contact me and say they didn't get phone call. They got a, I think a focus message or something. I'm a little concerned about that. But I've reached out to my principals and asked for an update on that as to why they weren't contacted like I asked. So, I'll, I'll be able to get that information back to you when I find out.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Ball?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dunell.
Yes, again, I, I wanna thank our community as a whole right now as far as how we stepped up in regards to, you know, our community needs. I just wanna thank, you know, all those different agencies. I mean, I seen trucks from all over, you know, Polk County. I seen something from Jacksonville and I, so it, it just amazes me, you know, how things fall right, you know, into play when there's a need and just the response we're able to get. I continue to pray for our community as well as those other states and areas that was impacted by this hurricane. Just really praying for our coastal community, for Hennstein Hatchie and Keating Beach. You know, they're just been so greatly impacted by these last three storms. I think this one made more of an impact. I know a lot of people have compared it to the storm of the century from 1993. I don't even remember that one. But my husband gave me some history on that one. But just continue prayers for those families and just anyway, folks can. I think this gives a real opportunity for people to take their thoughts out for themselves or someone else, or something else that might have them, you know, preoccupied right now when we have stuff like this happen. And there's such a great need. And just, you know, prayers for our own employees that's been impacted by this. I know we've had several that has been impacted by this in a great way. And so, I just think we, as a district, need to be mindful in regards to how we move forward as a district with our employees and our families. Anytime, you know, it was good to hear that, you know, you asked the administrators and the teachers to make those phone calls. I just think sometimes that's something what people need, you know? Just, you know, someone to say, how you doing? How's everything going? I think we always been a community far as resources. So, I think once we're able to just put that information out there, people are able to take advantage of it. I want to again acknowledge Mr. Sullivan and the boosters. Again, I by no ways was trying to diminish anything. I just again want us to understand as a board, just, you know, we, we have those hard jobs sometimes when it comes to different things that come to us as a community. And I don't, I don't take it lightly that this give us the opportunity to engage our community on a lot of what we do out here to make them aware of how we operate and how things happen. So, again, I just want to make sure it's understood what my concern was, how we take precedent. You know, that it will set a precedent, how we take action in regards to things and how, and the nature of how they come to us. And just any opportunity we have to acknowledge the public and involve the public. I, I really do think that's a big part of our jobs, that they don't just vote us to represent them. They want them, they want to be involved. And so, congratulations to Mr. Coker and his family. Congratulations to the Burgess family for this honor. And I just really, I just pray that we get the community involvement on whatever the booster club has planned in regards to present this accomplishment to the community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Agner?
I just wanna continue to pray for the community and just encourage everybody to take a five-minute break every so often during the day. People are just going so hard and working so diligently to fix things. And mentally, they're so physically, mentally tired that that's when you make accidents. And just encourage you to take five minutes, sit down, rest, take a cold glass of water. You know, I, the stress of it for the kids, I think it's just gonna be great for them to get out of that. And I think that's gonna take some stress off of the parents because they, you know, they're not having to worry about the, you gotta stop what I'm doing over here to go feed the kids now. So, I just think it'll be a good thing. And, and I appreciate Alicia's email that she sent. I really do. I ask that everybody continue to pray for the people in the Carolinas. And it's just, we're so blessed that we're on top of everything, the homes, the material things can be replaced. We're just so blessed that we didn't have any, you know, too much loss of life in Florida. But it's just, it's just horrible everywhere else. So, we continue to pray for them. And that's about all I have.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Carlton.
Yes, just a couple of things. I, I'm, I'm really glad, and it's just amazing to me that school can start up tomorrow. I mean, coming through a category four hurricane with, I'm gonna say that the damage to our school buildings was minimal. I wanna thank our boots on the ground with FSBIT and the emergency advantage and synergy and all of them. I mean, they were here. I mean, they were just pounded on us. They were staged, they were ready. I think they were just amazed that they could get everything done. And we're, we're going back up as soon as we can. I appreciate Alicia in that leadership role too. I mean, that was a, just some coordination. I do appreciate that. And as far as anything else, I just, I've been working at the emergency operations center along with what Deidre said. It is just amazing to see the volunteers and the things that people's trying to do for, for, for our community. I mean, I know they're trying to do it for others, but I mean, just what's showing up here is just amazing and that they're able.
And, and don't hesitate to ask. If you need help, don't hesitate to ask. It's out there. You just gotta, you know, Samaritan's Purse is at Calvary again and they're a wonderful group. I've been volunteering a little bit there and will continue to do that. So, if you, anybody wants to volunteer, that's a good place to volunteer. Okay? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just, that.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, as we close down this evening, a lot of, you know, a lot of the thoughts that we have really is out there in the, in our community. The question, we all know that, that a lot of people are hurting. We ourselves have been affected, all of us on this board and somehow, in some way. I've had multiple phone calls from folks all across the southeast trying to want to know how we were doing, what could they do, when could they come, things of that nature. And I've just been, simply been telling folks, people down here in Taylor County are mentally and physically wore out, wore out from the storms. And what's happened in the last year, the less than a year and a half from the storms, from the closing of meals and job loss and so forth. You know, Taylor County, in the last, less than a year and a half, the landscape of this community has been changed and will be changed as far as we know in the future. People are asking what's next? What's gonna happen next? And none of us know what the future holds. But I would just simply say that I sit here, I don't like what I've seen. I don't like what we've had to bear. But also, I know that the word tells us that the Lord will not put on us anything that we're not able to bear. I sit here tonight with hope. I still have hope for the future. We may want, I'm hoping that one day we look back down the road and we see our community flourishing. We see jobs back. We see families doing well, our sys, our school system doing great. And we look back and we're gonna look back at these times that we've been through. And maybe these times is preparing us, giving us the strength to move on and for better things that's ahead of us. And so, I just wanna just say to everybody tonight, we're all in the same boat together. And some have been affected somewhat greatly than others, but we're all hurting. And I just hope that we'll continue to be for one another, to support one another, to work with one another. And to, to just, we'll get through it. We'll get through it. So, I just pray for safety as our buses begin to travel because they are still, some of our roads are mighty, mighty thin as far as trees still down on the edges, tower poles still. some of our roads are mighty, mighty thin, as far as trees still down on the edges, power poles still down. And still a lot of, a lot of homes that do not have power as of yet. And so we just pray that we're glad the school's gonna start back, it'll give the opportunity for the kids, those who can, to come. But I'm glad to hear that the parents have the, have the option, if they, you know, that they don't feel like they're just impelled to, to have their kids here. But we do need to pray for safety, that trying to get the kids that can come here and get them back and so forth, and so a lot of, a lot of things moving, a lot of, I think, the, the thousands of people who've come to our community to help us. I thank you for that. Uh, but, uh, one day at a time, so, uh, with that said, uh, do we have a motion, a second that we adjourn?
Right, just a minute.
One more thing, I apologize, um, and I apologize, I didn't ask for this already. I'm a little worried with all these hurricanes, all these expenses coming up. Can we consider having an additional meeting on the 29th? I don't wanna wait till the last minute to ask for that.
Oh, but what, what date is that on?
The Tuesday, so we have, our next meeting is the 15th.
It's two weeks later.
And it'll be two weeks later, because in November, we only have that one meeting, I think, the, um.
Reorder.
Reorganization.
I'm fine with that.
So October 29th?
Yeah, I can just go ahead and put that out there, I'm, I just want, I just be thinking about that.
Well, if you, if you see you need it, just, we're just, uh, or, or you wanna, let's go ahead and schedule.
Just go ahead and schedule it.
Go ahead and schedule it, and.
We'll need it.
All right, everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Dunell makes that motion, Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, this meeting is adjourned.